To declarations to any disposals of the town, apologies, I've been with the mayor's appeal making science in the hot seat.
We have to think that.
Well, I'm actually so six one two twenty two declarations to disposals of the town. And I know you see there in the cop up to the force that we can be prepared there. This one pretty twenty two quality for access to this town.
The quality we received from councillors Brian, Cam, Paul, for Downing, Poise, James, Jenny.
I haven't been a bit thin on what I understand then, so thank you to councilor to have turned up for the remaining three quarters. That's about anything thing for what. So six one four twenty two minutes, sixty seven minutes to the ceremony before council meeting in Hong Kong twenty ninth of November. And especially before council meeting in November, it was intended January, was in downtown meeting at the end of the centre of Hensley, the end of the pack up today. Um, so as the mayor not here, then the minutes to celebrate, we plan to meet in Hong Kong twenty ninth of November. Thank you. One, two, three. From me, um, all this old business, I do look to it. Before you go, the minutes. But, you know, my name is someone that I'm not really happy that I can sign on. Yeah, it's really good. And then obviously, special for council meeting in tenth of January. I maybe one, anything to. Uh, again, we'll see the votes there. Um, and we're happy to be through though. There's no need to be too. Then we're going to the special amenities recently, sorry, that's the most amount we can give you. For the ceremony. I've got the chair and my chair, you may ask, that's a great. And then on the last, we are standing upon a Sunday, just telling you this week. Now, what happened, there was room for the minutes, but we're trying to begin. Maybe three, because it's of the planning continued after the thirteenth of December, um, staff chair. Getting towards our business, as well tends to be, um. Thank you. One, two, three, four, and three, four, with this, through which I'm new, although they don't have it to be. You find out during the there was a special meeting related on the fortyth of December. Thank you, the chair, actually, my chair. So I'm going on stage. And then last year, I had that picture. And I'm here, so I'd like to, uh, I mean, the minutes, it's all, uh, the whole fitness, um, and, uh. We have you. On to the special finance committee of the fourth of January. Chair, actually, the chair, yes, and to the staff.
And then so the special finance meeting on the fifth of January, the recommendation can just be quite to increase that just to be with your every fourth answer might be unique.
Well, thank you.
And that happened in very quick, so any of your answers for some of them. We've already done that, so if you can't make that.
And then on to planning committee after tenth of January. And seven, one, two, and three. And I feel it's all business, there's nothing there. No, it's all concerned with those individuals, you know. We didn't. Do you, I mean, all these, any of the locations based on the United of January. On the new day. And it's one, two. Two, four. With each of these halls, we just modify, I want you to believe that we're working together, yeah, but you're fine. And you call right, and you, and you policy, media policy, yeah, when you're not, you're all, there's a way to, there's a way to use. Very, okay. Um, then on to the amenities, the community on eighteen of January. Um, the chair absent, we. Really, honestly, it doesn't bother with that, so if you're happy to, then basically, then it's the rhythm and, uh, let the door with the old business, uh, so. I've been, we, you know, you know. And now on to the finance committee, the twenty fourth of January, um, chair, we say for both chairs, whether it's the management department.
Oh, sorry, yes. I'm still writing, I do apologize, oh, for the minutes.
Very good.
We've created the minutes of the finance meeting on twenty fourth of January. The result allows you to have the presentation on the first second, and then I would receive what I've been asked to twenty dollars. Um, this, 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 the community number forty. Don't worry about the record, um, as long as all, as soon as all, as soon as all, I have to do five different minutes.
And here, obviously, the papers, the next one, we, we want to do this next segment. It's all working, it's that way, the mayor's remarks, I think one six twenty two, um. As you can see, you can see, just the events that attended, um, not wanting to. But what it is, the mayor, then, uh, who was with the way, just tried to put John Digo, um, and we, um. You, and because of all, I think, I think it's, it's well, so, so, but.
Um, I think it was just very important about people, people we were talking about being, um, master plan, and how much involving sites across the town, but hopefully that we're involved, and how it means to you, and how far over the, and the build, probably, Kingstown, and people's. And so that's kind of a big thing for that to kind of make sure that our heritage can be managed sustainably across the town, not only with individual owners and precise, and, you know, for the long term, reserve it for the town. So that's, there's a lot of talk about that, a lot of businesses that were interested in being part of that. And the other thing that you probably want to mention is the, uh, mayor's Christmas work, which has now become part of the, uh, annual civic, there was, um, I think there was about people in, 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 or, um. I don't know, but a lot more mature people in the town were there for their, um, Christmas lunch, and, um, there was, uh, presents, and there was hamburgers, and there was singing, eating, and much moment, and, um, actually, we got some really, really good feedback from the event from the people who were attending, and, um, that was mainly, yeah, that we were potentially were going to do on our own at Christmas, I'm having on the twenty first of, if there was a place to, as soon as possible, and, um, yes, it's now because of the, uh, positive impacts of that event, it's now going to be a civic event every year, every month, every month, on your side. I think that's our third one, third one. So, yeah, so that's good news, and, um, you know, um, it was very legal, and we asked for help, we were, uh, partners in that area, the telephone centre, and, um, pizza, and supermarkets, they made lots of food at, at one stage, we had about a hundred different, not one, but, of two, uh, that would have been fun, um, and so it, it was really, um. Well supported across the town, so that's
Thank you. And we move on to six one seven twenty two, town council representative. And anyone who's reading that, you know. No, I mean.
We're here at the staff meeting, um, the public business was on the fifth of January, it was well attended, and we also basically, Brian Bush was there, Charles O, uh, a court press, maybe, who gave a presentation about police numbers, and the, um, any projects, and, uh, as well received, and we asked questions, and we sort of get the library, filling the day. Um, the police gave a report on, um. One figures in effect, which include biggest of the streets, and, um, and the bigger, previous twelve months, um. Okay, um, we've been initially on the story, more of a street, uh, street treatment, and now things have been put in place, which will hopefully, um, help the situation, um, there's been an increased presence in part of those street, due to increased ASP around the area, um, but it looks as well with, um, my, I just seen that, but, and it may help reduce these weeks, um, these reports on incidents involved for our clients, um, and so, um, on the, on a face office, there are very poor on the illegal use of off road vehicles. Um, issues with rough security status, um, and licensing that, um, which we're very scared, um, so, you know, the police priorities, the state priorities, this part, January to April, uh, recommend in the main before, which is animal social behaviour, yeah, leaving, um, yes, that town centre, on the streets, and the off roads, please, our, 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 into the detail, park, and the next meeting, we'll give it on the sixth of April, at the good old morning, at the, the seventh half.
I started saying, maybe we're feeling that because of the crime dynamics, was there, uh, improved or?
Been on there, yeah, so, we don't know, maybe not, you know.
Uh, what I have to say is that the crime statistics, unfortunately, are not very good, and the reason they're not very good is because we're comparing what we get now with Covid, and Covid was pretty bad enough, so we're going back, sort of, four years to try and establish what the trend is, so it's really difficult to make that, uh, that's not a decision. What I think I answered that from our perspective is, all the drugs, and this got raised at the, uh, North Road, um, association as well, there is, is probably many of you know, there's a big drug call in the centre of town, a few weeks ago, in the old select shop, you couldn't miss it, and you could probably get looking down at it, and you'd walk past it. So that's a kind of good news story that the police caught it, it's bad news that it's here, but it's everywhere, and, but also, it is out on the estate, so out on, um, the Glee on the past, where since the young man was arrested there, for terrorist offence, so it is fully out from the town centre, and, you know, it's something very much in our town, but the police statistics for what they've actually caught, is huge, but who knows what the rest of the others over the top. So. We've come this much, we've come this much, and we've, we're very aware of it, like companies, that much, too much, and I mean, it's, um, it looks that it's been had people have checked that, and I assume it's in some hours, but there's not air, it isn't a river again, and, that's the whole time here to look, so, this is looking at some of that, definitely be back, so, we, we do see this trend, because this happened through Covid, we can see that, we're with those, and the summer highs, and the street interests, they're still doing quite a lot of, um, community protection notices and warnings that are still happening, and, unfortunately, they come out, um, the prison commissioner, is it, we found out that, um, status, that case you can put in a cumulative impact policy for the amount of living spaces in town, that's fallen off the bar, so once it's a degree of that preference, uh, last it's immediately, because of Covid, and nothing happened for two years, then no one's to resubmit it, so we've got to do a lot of work to resubmit that case, and what this does, for those who are sitting there, is, it involves wanting to take a , a close look on anybody who works that face, but I presume, anybody puts on any, get it, you'll, you'll, you'll get it straight away, and, so unfortunately, you can't reach our hunger, and unfortunately, we are not doing it. On that, so we haven't got, I don't know, the comments for the sisters for our story, but the good news is, the prison commissioner has already sent a letter to you, but, and saying he would like something done, for, for the policeman, or, uh, you know, even with alcohol, but we did our town centre, it is still there, and it isn't just the drinking, it's the, the other, uh, any social behaviour that goes with this, a lot of drug taking, it's next to it, a lot of homelessness, um, and you only have to go into the, uh, the various charities in town, find out that it's still going along, each process, don't see it. So then, you know, how do you, you know, you got, you know, just like. So then moving on to, um, six one twenty two, I looked, I did pick up on there, six one seven, I did attend, um, I'm getting you, um, of course, attending this, I was just going to finish off myself, and, so, ten has worked on all of the bodies, I did attend, there's quite a lot of tenors meeting, as they've been there, and partners, as was the mayor, Breckland were, I presented this on there, ideas for coronation, you know, we should be in the, in the, on the, in the, in the network, and, you know, the public article files, um, which, the voters that can't be mentioned, being, you just critically, um, and I would like to then get to the planning committee to discuss a little bit further, they did say that we come with a presentation on that, but looking for, we are so, actually, in English, it's a really, really, that's interesting, and I don't think we get that very well, but it's, it's funny. You usually, recently, got things, by a time, probably, and, and other problems, no one really, on, let's see, you know, just like, you know, they start acting, so against the rest of it, you know, they're sort of, you could, you know, for example, travel time, natural, there's really fifteen minutes near the Cambridge, the re-plant, right, and, you know, it's just things that are, you know, I've heard of a little, you know, I'm quite, I don't think.
Um, I think that's what my business is, is that, that can have a fund that people, community groups, and, um, the streets, and people, this group, is going to fall for funding, for work, and for, on their own, for celebrations, um, and also, if they look on the Coronation Big Lunch website, there is, um, information, and there's going to be, like, templates for banners, and, bikes, and everything else on there, well, they did have some funding town councils, but, to us, it was they helped, they, there's only kind of this rock, more black hole, which, which we, there is more black hole, and, and since, and money for, uh, union flags, um, and since, we just had to do brief, they've already got union flags, so actually, um, none of that really was, um, for us, so also, looking at the competency of offering , um, large two days, two pounds if they wanted to, to, um, screen the coronation, but they are, before that was before, they found out that it was going to be, like, one to twelve on Saturday morning, we as a town council are looking at business street party on Sunday, and having also for the big help out, um, having stores available on the market festival, community of volunteer organisations, to tell everybody what they do, and to encourage people to sign up and help out in the coronation year, so that it's going to raise your profile, as they work on the budget, in the town, to, to be part of that.
Um, I'll move on then to, of course, county and district councils, six one twenty two, and so the lands are keen to present our, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Shane, for that. Um, that, uh, at Breckland, uh, the finance committee, I asked, um, I asked a question about the Breckland Bridge, did I, I was, I don't know about it, they did, uh, Breckland, um, parceling up small areas planned in the cross, uh, across the district, looking to sell them off. Um, this is when it gets a bit woolly, they 're not really sure, or, and, or the development might be green spaces, it would certainly be on a case by case basis, I've got here quite a lot of these on, um, my political boards, um, the line at that, it would be really appreciated if we could have support attack house for resisting any attack, uh, to reduce angry spaces. Okay, I think, you know, unless we've got a proposal of what's, I'm thought we had in the past, resisted, uh, in the, in the central itself, that there's, um, we've planned, we've generally, or, if I hadn't had considered it, under the infection at the moment, um, we would need someone to title it, like, we, we used to.
We, no, we haven't received anything for Breckland reference, so.
It is kind of a big plan, you know, see, consideration, it'd be.
Yeah.
I think, I think part of the problem is, um, that the areas that they're standing on, they're a bit vague about where they actually are, it's all got a, I'm sort of mad, that she's saying, it's true, going from that to go internal, piece of land is.
Because you are already a community physician, so it's almost like, we thought that we, um, as a council, object to the lots of any other, and then we do that.
I think, I mean, there's one thing, uh, it's very funny, I have to say, so, I proved earlier, it's, I mean, and I did see that there, there, if I'm right, there was three car parks on it, yeah, which, you know, but they're quite specific, as as there is, they're, they're, but, the difficulty is, on the Breckland side, you cannot find, in any of the committees, where that is, because there are not many on that, there's not on this.
No.
And so it is worrying, where things are being done, but they're not being done, it very difficult for us to act on it, and generally, as you say, we have to wait, as you also know, we said, we're going to try this.
We, we haven't been sent any information on that, probably.
But we could speculate what you've got to the town council, as to the, where, and what the other ones, essentially, it's just, uh, uh, anecdotes from, on any team, that you would launch up, so what to say.
Because, as I could have, you took me on as well, the listen.
Big difference to say, you know, you will see.
We have to, yeah, of course.
After that.
Thank you.
Of course. I mean, yeah, you're saying, uh, my, the , the, 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 for the dimension, but we can get that, and, to establish, so that, and so, it would, it would, you know, you know, take that, and so, we, we would have to, um, um. I think this is really all prepared, um, I've had a few sites, I mean, what I've said, of course, um, the, the, and, um, all of them are sold quite well, and I think we, that's probably quite a place to have a, as, as, getting to, to maximize, I mean, some of the, maybe, um, science concerns seem to be very dangerous, this country, well, if you, we've got, we've got those things, I, I thought it's not worth it, I just, about, I don't believe this. Um, the road areas, which seems to me, I don't think this myself, there's a tiny piece, that's been sold, except, and a half, you know, I can't, well, I'm, I'm just, um, it was probably on the one lane. I guess, so, um, which is putting a car, car off, and spent someone's house, and they bought, and they have part of the car, and that seems reasonable to me, no, there hasn't been a piece of that, just growing grass, and now it's gone, someone's there for it, if you can, may he's, shall I say, and that seems reasonable, I've been in a rather, such a much, for a head, or something, each, one by one, pays by, say, yes, it's open, you go, but it's because, I'm hoping that the planning committee, um, I think that's listening to us, um, some of them are, on the Breckland, there's a bit of media, they have, this is the one or two, the various, um, for the councils, the scientists say, that is, uh, not always, uh, and it's certainly where, we've been standing, but I think there, so, with your district , I mean, you say, please make sure that the planning committee are aware of how important this is, that, and, and, this is, that, it's for the, some of the, to do in some other space, the one, for example, um, it's on the top of the main, a bunch of, um, Stacey Road, um, I've come with a market, but it's a very nice piece of that, with, um, some pretty lines, I'm hope we can, so, not after several to develop on the, so, that's, in, where we need to, so, I'm, 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 I'm supposed to, I, what, um. You can say, but. That's being vigilant, that's some sort of this, can, vigilant about what's happening, that we've got a sense, I think, and to make sure that Breckland, yeah, it is, of, of our opinion. I thought so, more than this. Yeah. This is why, what the information you have, the car, if there are any signs, I will, in the sense, from you, that, that question you have, how, so, once you call that, and then we will go to, so, we've been, my, where this, when we want to be able to lose, might be. Um, yes. Um, I answered, certainly, certainly, that provisions, so the, what I changed to, both in, which were, for that, both I did, um, I'm not using this, which I'm. That's about. But, um, but, officers that come to me, they're, you know, officers that come to me, likely, they're very determined, I said, um, in terms of, essentially, they'll have the least there, that there is the same, um, with the, so, there, Catholic, they, likely, our councillors, from all the sides that has, all the stuff about their concerns, really has to aim, to move into a problem that probably doesn't exist, anyway, um, Breckland say that most times, why, aim to train officers and do the, to finally, keep people aware that these challenges happen, uh, they were coming to force, uh, for the, uh, local